I'd like to call this meeting to order. The secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Sizmar?
Here.
Mrs. Gwass?
Here.
Mr. Hong?
Here.
Mrs. Lax?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Winston?
Here.
President Becker?
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education office. Written-off notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcasts. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. It's... Oh. It is so nice to see so many people out on what is finally a cold winter evening, and to see so many... I'm sorry, I happen to think it should be cold in the winter, silly me. But it is so nice to see so many of our students. Welcome. We're very, very glad to have you with us tonight. So we're going to start off this evening with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening to everyone. The District Physical Education Bowl was held on Friday, February 7th. Multiple vendors from the community met with students and families to promote an active lifestyle and activities for our students outside of school. I'd like to thank the physical education teachers for producing that PE Bowl. Students and parents had a great time. On Friday, February 14th, East Brunswick Public School celebrated National Go-Red Day. The district-wide denim day raised $3,135 for the American Heart Association. This event was sponsored by the American Heart Association in an effort to raise awareness for women's heart health. Thank you to all who participated. Irwin's 5th Grade hosted their annual environmental convention today. This year's convention expanded the opportunities for students to investigate various areas of science and technology. Students could complete a research-based project, create something new from recyclable materials, or describe a company's plan to go green. Students worked throughout the month of February to create their projects. The entire 5th Grade was excited to share their creations with the school, community, and their parents. Today, Frost School hosted a Diversity Day. The event showcased the cultural diversity that exists within the school and community. Parent volunteers were invited to teach our students about their culture and country of origin. The students learned about the country's dress, food, customs, and traditions. They had their passports stamped after visiting each station. Thank you to all who participated and helped to make this an amazingly fun learning event for all who attended. In sports, congratulations to the girls' bowling team for being the NJ SIAA sectional champions, and to Mackenzie Keen for being an individual GMC and sectional champion in bowling a perfect 300 game during the NJ SIA competition. So congratulations to her. Tonight at Churchill Junior High School, the production of Peter Wendy by Jeremy Blum began. The show will be performed tonight and Friday, February 21st, at Churchill Junior High School. Tomorrow's performance will begin again at 7:00 PM. Tickets are on sale now at cjhs/booktix.com. On March 4th and 5th at 7:00 PM, the Hammerhill Drama Club will be presenting Shrek the Musical Junior. The production will be held at the JM Pack. Tickets are available at the door. Don't miss the opportunity to see our students onstage. The East Brunswick Education Foundation's Partner in Excellence Center will be held on Tuesday, March 31st, at the Pines Manor in Edison. The East Brunswick Education Foundation trustees will honor Joanne Shmilowicz, Leslie Anderson, and Jane Mueller. In addition, the EBEF will be celebrating the Alumni Hall of Fame induction of Anthony Usoloff, David Rubinowitz, and Charlie Wachtel. For ticket information, please visit ebef.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. And now we have our two student presentations. Dr. Valesky, would you like to introduce them, please?
Yes, ma'am. We have some very energetic preschool students from Bowman Row who would like to present to the Board tonight.
Hi. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I teach preschool at Bowman Row. My name is Kathy Parkinson. I will introduce my students as we proceed with our lesson. As you all know, preschoolers love to play, and I'm sure you all know that play also goes hand-in-hand with learning. Something we've been learning this year is to ask and answer questions. Now, you may say to yourself, "How do you teach three, four, and five-year-olds how to ask a question?" Well, the answer is simple: popsicle sticks. We use popsicle sticks not only for craft projects, but we use them for teaching and for learning. We are going to do a mini show-and-tell lesson for you this evening so you can observe the skills my preschoolers have in asking and answering questions. Okay? So let's start with Paige. Come on up. Is this yours? If you have a yellow question stick, would you please come up? Yellow. Come on up, Anthony. So we have Anthony and Seraphina. Come right over here. Your question, your first question, is "What." Can you ask Paige a question with the word "what"?
What is it? It's a Minnie Mouse doll.
Thank you very much. You may have a seat. Great question, great answer. And your question is going to start with the word "how."
How does it work?
It can jump high.
It can jump high. Can you show us? Thank you very much. Great question, great answer. Thank you. You may go back and have a seat. Okay. Anthony, you may come up next. Blue, if you have a blue question stick, please come up. Who has blue? Do you want to come up, Hunter? No. Okay. Come on up. Okay, come on over here, Paige. Anthony, your first question from Paige is "where." Can you think of a question with the word "where"?
Where did you get it? From hockey.
Wow, that's very exciting. Thank you very much. Have a seat. Now, I have a question for you. Why did you get it?
Because I've been warming up the hockey kids.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you. You can go have a seat. Okay. Parker, come on up. Orange, if you have a orange question stick, please come up. We have Zachary, who's going to ask Parker a question. Who else has an orange question stick? Come on over here, Zachary. Okay. So your first question is going to start with the word "why."
Why did you get it?
I wanted to bring it for show-and-tell.
Well, thank you very much. And I see, I'm going to let Zachary use this for a minute, okay? The next question is going to start with the word "who."
Who gave it to you?
Uncle Paul.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You may have a seat. Thank you. Okay. Seraphina? You want to come up, Seraphina? Have a seat. Red, if you have a red question stick, please come up. Come on over here, Parker. And Zachary. Stand right here. Zach, Zachary, come over here. Your question is going to start with the word "what."
What is it?
It's a Minnie Mouse, pinkish-goldish doll, and it's a ballerina.
Thank you. Thank you. Great question, great answer. And Zachary, your question is going to start with the word "where."
Where did you get it?
I didn't get it nowhere.
Zachary, come over here for a minute. Listen, I'm wondering, I'm just wondering, why did Seraphina bring that today? Could you ask her that for me, please?
Why did you bring it?
Because, because I love it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to come up? Do you want to come up, Hunter? Why don't you go have a seat? Whose is this? Come on up, Zachary. Who has a question stick left? Okay, green, come on up. Come right over here. Okay. Your question is going to start with the word "what."
What is it?
A monster truck!
Wow. Oy. Thank you. All right, go have a seat. And your question is going to start with the word "who."
Who gave it to you?
My grandma.
Okay. Thank you. All right, have a seat. Thank you. We have one more show-and-tell, which is a very loved little animal. May I bring this over to you, Hunter? Can he sit next to you? Okay. Who has a question stick left? Paige and Parker, come on over. Your question word is going to start with the word "what." Can you ask, Hunter?
What is it?
Can I answer for you? All right. This is a bunny, and his name is... Jumpy. Can you show us how he jumps? Oops. There you go. Thank you. And our last question is going to start with the word "why."
Why did you bring it?
Because I wanted to.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
How did you all become so good at show-and-tell? That was wonderful! Thank you so much for sharing with us. Really glad you came.
I like that idea about the question stick. But if you don't have a stick, you can't ask a question. I like it.
You meant for the board members.
I'm just saying.
I was thinking we could give you a bunch of popsicle sticks in September.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you again. And now I believe we have another...
We do. We have the Irwin Elementary School. We have an interesting collaboration between 2nd and 5th grade students that are going to present tonight.
Oh, I thought you brought us pizza.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Those preschoolers are a hard act to follow, but we're going to do our best. The 2nd graders at Irwin wanted to bring their social studies unit on Earth and landforms to life. They also asked their 5th grade buddies to help them because they knew they were learning about trash power. They teamed up to collect trash items that could be used to make a three-dimensional landform map. Mountains, rivers, volcanoes, forests, and more were created. Lots of creativity, lots of fun, and lots of learning was had by all.
In 2nd grade social studies, we study our Earth, like whose landforms. Landforms are hills, plains, mountains, valleys, peninsulas, lakes, rivers, and oceans. Today, we're learning about landforms is important because landforms tell us some information about the Earth.
In 5th grade science, we study trash power, which is about recycling, reducing, and reusing materials. I learned a lot about trash and that we need to do something about it, like recycling and reducing materials.
We learned about maps and map keys. First, we planned our project on a 2D flat map. I enjoy working with my 5th grade buddy because he helped me develop my ideas about my map and creating the map key. When I see my buddy around school, I feel proud of us.
We worked alongside the 2nd graders to help them construct and design the 3D map. I enjoy working with the 2nd graders because they're fun to work with and come up with good ideas. I like having a buddy in 2nd grade because it's nice working with 2nd graders and helping them out. This makes me feel really good.
We got materials such as cups, yarn, paper towels, and our teachers provide us with pizza boxes. We use the materials to build up our landforms. We had to be very careful to make sure they're in the right place and so they don't break.
We recycled materials to create these landforms. We use cups or mountain, we use cups to make mountains or volcanoes. We use things like cotton balls to make glaciers or snow. And we took construction paper, green construction paper, to make grass or water or even trees.
We created landforms on a 3D map. Some of the landforms we created were islands, rivers, lakes, plains, trees, mountains, and volcanoes. Doing this project helped me understand, helped me understand landforms better because I can visually see it.
We helped the 2nd graders to use materials for the landforms. We helped the 2nd graders see possibilities of the landforms and the materials. We bounced ideas off each other for the different ways we should use the materials.
I learned landforms are part of our Earth and can sometimes be messy. I wave to Ruby when I see her in the hallway, and I like when we help each other.
I learned 2nd graders can be very creative, and Leana is one of the most creative people I ever met. For the trash power unit, I learned that plastic jugs can take a very long time to decompose, so reusing materials in a landform project is a great way to reuse materials.
We really enjoyed this project because it was fun to work with our 5th grade buddies. They helped me by giving me more ideas. Maddie would hold the material, and we would glue the material to the pizza box.
We really enjoyed this project because I was able to use recycled materials and turn the materials into something better. My 2nd grade buddy Chloe is very creative and had a lot of cool ideas for the landform project.
Nice job, everyone. Can I ask the students a question before they reassemble? For the 5th graders, do you remember being a 2nd grader?
Yes, partially.
And, and do you, did you ever have this experience when you were 2nd graders?
I did Peter League, but besides that, no.
I think it's very cool that you guys were collaborating together and working together. That's, that's an awesome display of cooperation and showcasing the talent you all have in, in Irwin. So thank you for doing that.
We're going to take a brief two-minute recess so that, parents, you can get your little ones home. Though I'm sure they'd love to stay for the rest of our meeting. Please feel free, so we're in recess. Thank you.
So, yes, so this is continuation of our budget presentations and discussion on the fiscal year 2021 school budget. This evening, we have special ed presentation by Mrs. Renee Davis. So, Mrs. Davis, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I will just give you a high-level overview of the special education budget, and please feel free to ask me any questions as, as we move along. As far as the special education budget, what you have before you just is, just a summary of the services and supports that, the finances that we need to support the services for special education students. As far, there's three components to the budget. It's the base budget, the tentatively approved budget, and then the proposal. So as far as the base budget, that is just a combination of what we really need to generally run the special education department. So that would include contracted services. That's one of the largest pieces of the, the base budget. The evaluations, the cost to conduct evaluations, whether it's by our staff or the child study team. Supplies for the, for the program as far as the summer program that we have, office supplies, and also services for the students, the, the devices that the students have. We also have transportation costs for the, the community-based program that we provide for the students, and home instruction. So that is basically the base budget for special ed. And that's a pie chart that basically depicts the baseline budget information as well as the tentative budget. The tentative budget is just a combination of at a district, at a district tuition, as well as extraordinary services for students. I'm happy to say that we're projected to have a few less students at a district than we have this current school year. We have, on average, about 60 students at a district. Next year, we're projecting, as of right now, about 56 students at a district. And as far as the extraordinary services, that is the one-to-one aides or the one-to-one nurses that are provided to students that have medical or significant behavioral needs. So again, that's just the base budget as well as the tentative budget. As far as the pending budget, these are just things that I feel are necessary to support students for next year. So on pages, on page 33, you'll find a summary about the therapeutic contracted services. This is a continuation of something that I proposed last year where the district is entering into an RFP to search for an agency that can provide therapeutic services for our students. So just, services for students are tiered. Tier 1, tier 2, and tier 3. Tier 1 are the universal supports and services that we provide our students. So that's just what we do in East Brunswick. We do that very well. Our counselors, our case managers provide counseling, crisis intervention, different levels of support for students. That's tier 1. That's just basically what we offer in our district and what we do well. Tier 2 and tier 3 are more specialized and targeted services where we realize a student needs maybe a higher level of support. So for us, we provide counseling and crisis intervention. A tier 2 or tier 3 level support would be something that's more therapeutic. I always say that we can educate a child, but if they're not available for education because of medical crises, it, it's hard to, to deliver the services that we have for students. So with this RFP, we're looking to provide therapy, we're looking to partner with an agency that can provide therapeutic services to our students. This is something that we see in East Brunswick, we see in New Jersey, and even beyond, where students are coming in, in psychiatric distress and have other mental health needs that we need to address as a school district. If we can, if we can address those needs, we can better educate our students. So that is why you'll see the proposal for $350,000 for therapeutic support services. How those services will look, we're proposing two therapists at the high school level and one therapist at Churchill to address the psychiatric and therapeutic services for our students. So that's the first pending budget item. The next one on page, pages 35 through 38 just speak to some of the direct services that our children need. So one is a BCBA, a behavioral analyst, to work with our students. Right now, we have one, and you approved the 12-month BCBA, I think, last meeting or the meeting prior to that. But we have over 30 specialized programs in district that service approximately 150, 160 students. With that said, we are, we have wonderful programs, but in order to continue to address the growing needs of our students, we need another behavior specialist who works directly with students. They also work directly with teachers and even with parents. So in order to support these students, we need to add a BCBA. And again, this is in response to the growing population that we have. The next proposal is for two case managers. As it stands right now, on the secondary level, we have, our students need a lot of supports and, and services, and so do our parents. And in order to continue to provide that high-level quality of support and services to our students, we really need to make sure that the case managers have a caseload that is much more manageable. Some of the things that they are charged with doing, not just writing IEPs, but also providing counseling, crisis intervention, testing, and evaluating our students. Just this year, we've received over 100 referrals from parents for special education. So in order to continue to meet those needs, it would be important to have two new case managers on the, on the secondary level. One other proposal is for a full-time secretary. Right now, we have three secretaries that support the needs of more than 1,200 students and more than 45 case managers. It's important to have an additional secretary to support, again, the growing needs of our students. Right now, we generate, I would say, about 2,000 IEPs a year and over 4,000 correspondence, whether it's letters, electronic, or actual paper letters. So in order to meet that demand, we really need a full-time secretary to support, excuse me, to support the, the child study team. One other recommendation would be a .5 special ed secretary for the Medicaid Initiative. So the SEMI, which is the Special Ed Medicaid Initiative, is something that we're required to do both federally and locally in the state of New Jersey. This is for students that, who are actually Medicaid eligible. We have approximately 300 students in the district that are eligible for Medicaid. As a result of this, classified students that are eligible for Medicaid. As a result of that, the district can recoup money for services rendered to these students, but we need someone to log the services for that. So I'm proposing that we add a .5 secretary to help with managing the special ed initiative, again, which is mandated by the state. The last thing you'll see on page 38 is a proposal for teachers. The last thing you'll see on page 38 is a proposal for teachers, but this will, the, the board has approved, recently approved, two new special education teachers, one for an in-class resource class and another for preschool class. So, that request will be amended to reflect exactly what we need for, for special education now, but I do appreciate the fact that that was approved and we're already implementing that. So, again, this is just a brief overview of special education now and what we're projecting for next year. So, I don't know if you have any specific questions or anything I can kind of elaborate on.
Hi, thank you. Just a, just a quick clarification. I'm trying to do a little quick math on my iPhone. I'm trying to figure out average salaries with some of the positions that you're talking about, and I'm just a little confused. I think it was page 35. In one section where you have the nurses on the buses, a nurse on the bus, what page was that? I'm sorry.
Yes, 35.
It is 35?
Yes. Oh, no, no, no.
That's 29?
Yes. There, there's the section where you have 15 or 14 nurses, or 14 aides, and then another section where you have eight or nine nurses. You have two different numbers there on each of those sections, and I don't know which one to use. You have 14, but then 15 in parentheses.
Okay.
And another, which, what's the total employee count?
It's 14.
Okay, so the 15 is a typo?
Yes.
And then on the next one down also?
Well, it says nine. Oh, you say three, yes. It's the three.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so the number is 14 and 3.
And three.
Thank you.
The one thing about special ed, I will say, is that, you know, based on the students' needs, that sometimes the, the numbers do change, you know, as far as students needing nurses, but as it stands right now, those are the numbers, the three.
I'm just trying to do an average salary, just to try to...
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, it could be any number. I was just trying to know which one it was.
Now, that also fluctuates depending on, on RN or an LPN. So, it, it may be hard for you to calculate exactly what the salary is. So, it, it's just, it depends on if the student needs an RN or an LPN. LPN is a little cheaper than an RN, but I hear what you're saying. You're just trying to get a ballpark.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, I can bet you're about 40, okay.
Yes.
So, based on what you said, apparent to the, a lot of paperwork to be done. So, we have the Hepster for the, to try to hold a half case. Is there any way we can find a software to help you, help the secretary to be more efficient to handle, in handling all those documents?
Yes. Actually, over the past couple of years, we've, we've implemented a couple of things that I would call our agreed initiative. We are sharing a lot of, a lot more documents via parent access or digitally. So, there is a way now where we are sharing documents in that fashion, but it's still the overhead demand power to actually input that information or send that information, but we are sharing more things as opposed to paper. We're sharing it electronically. So, which is good.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
So, just as follow-up, I wanted to just bring to your attention the upcoming dates. We have about a month at this point, by the time we have to adopt a tentative budget. We have budget presentations coming up at the March 5th board meeting and on the 19th of March. Next week, the governor will be delivering his budget address, and state aid information will be released two days later, so we'll have a better idea of where we are financially at that point in time. As I said, tentative budget adoption is in one month, March 19th, and then the next two activities after that will be a public hearing and final budget adoption. Certainly, budget discussions can and certainly, I'm sure, will continue in that intermediate period of time. Next, I'd like to just briefly report out on the board recent, the board's recent action to approve the refunding of bonds. School bonds were issued for the Memorial School reconstruction back in 2010, and the board recently approved the refunding of those bonds and reissuance at lower interest rates. So, as I said, 2010, we originally issued the bonds. Those interest rates ranged from 4% to 4.5% over the term. In order to be able to refund bonds, we need to be able to achieve at least a 3% net present value savings. Otherwise, it's not possible. Current economic conditions did warrant us looking at this because the savings were very likely to occur. So, here are the results. We, we refunded $11.3 million in bonds. The true interest rate, now, there are two columns. One was the estimated that our financial advisors were assisting us with what they were estimating, and the next column is what actually resulted in the sale last week. Our true interest rate was estimated at 3.07%. It actually came in at 2.38%. Keep in mind, what we were paying was between 4% and 4.5%. Significant, significant savings. Net present value savings on what was issued, estimated was 11.28%. We actually are achieving a net, a net present value savings of 21.58%. That translates into dollars right below that. Estimated savings on that present value was over $1.3 million. We're actually going to achieve in excess of $2.5 million. On the tax levy, that means on the debt service fund, original tax levy savings over the term was $1.7 million. It will actually be a tax levy savings over the term of the bonds of over $3 million. That comes out to an actual annual tax levy savings over the next 20 years of $143,000 a year.
Just one of your term?
Yes. That's the good news.
Do we have a statistic per, for what the impact is on somebody who's a property owner?
Converting this to cents, and it depends on, you know, now it starts getting a little bit hazy because are we using how the school tax rate gets calculated versus the township's billing process? Essentially, in town, a penny is about, if I remember correctly, roughly $200,000. So, it's less than a penny, but more than a half a cent. We're talking about, you know, one and three-quarters, roughly?
Still.
It's still, still significant.
It's, it's savings.
It's savings. It's real, real money savings.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernie.
Okay, this brings us to, for the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of providing an opportunity to the public to express themselves. To allow for a fair and orderly public comment period, individual comments are limited to five minutes. Members of the public are reminded this is a public televised meeting of the Board of Ed, and to protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding students and staff should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Is there anyone wishing to address the board tonight? Please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Catherine Nguyen. I live on Old Tenet Court. I have one child in Hammershold and one child in Warndstoffer. I will preface what I'm saying with a thank you for the environmentally aware changes that have been done so far. I'm coming here today to some, receive some honest answers. I will set my timer at five minutes so that everyone on the board can pay full attention, especially the legal advice, which I have found questionable or possibly unethical in my request last year to see a school lunch at Warndstoffer School. To that point, I would like to read something from the Food and Nutrition Service of USDA federal government website, whom funds East Brunswick Public Schools. Regarding school lunch programs, it reads verbatim. Ultimately, however, this issue is most effectively addressed at the local level through the efforts of concerned parents. We actively encourage parents to become involved in their children's school meals and to bring concerns and suggestions to the attention of local officials. Following is a checklist of 10 steps that parents should take to ensure that school meals are healthy, nutritious, and appealing. One, eat breakfast or lunch at school with your children. See what the meals are like. Notice the atmosphere. If you don't like what you see, do something. Two, make your opinions heard. Talk to other parents. Work with your PTA and school board to support healthy school meals. Three, go to the principal. Discuss the importance of good nutrition and physical activity. Suggest programs. Ask for cooperation. Most importantly, follow through. I could go on, but I'll stop there. Clearly, the federal government perceives public schools as something that concerned parents should have access to. This is exactly the opposite of what I was told by the legal counsel of this Board of Education last year when I voiced my concerns about the amount of waste at elementary school lunches. I don't see how anyone could disagree. It is quite clear, there is a discrepancy in understanding. I personally am not a fan of pretend, make-believe dishonesty, and placating real concerns. At the last Board of Ed meeting, Dr. Valeski pointed out clearly in his video recap of the schools that the district is actively recycling. I would like to bring to attention the box of plastic refuse I found at Warndstoffer Elementary School playground today, dropping off my child. It was mostly left from the after-school program. We have to extrapolate this bit of refuse using everyday, real-world math. So, let's times this by 180 days for the number of schools, days, and then eight for the number of elementary schools. That is 1,440 times what you see there. And that's only the elementary schools. When a person considers that one plastic bottle can kill a dolphin, or a whale, or any other ocean animal, any plastic litter is a problem. I truly question whether East Brunswick Schools recycle is an honest statement. I was there yesterday, and I noticed that the after-school program students were given single-use bottles of water along with their prepackaged snacks. Right next to it was a garbage can with a black bag. There was no recycling can at all. Unless you can honestly tell me you have somebody digging through the trash cans to pull out the plastic bottles, what you claimed is inaccurate. I would like a true answer to the question, do you recycle at schools? And if so, what do you recycle, and does it actually work? Taxpayers are entitled to know what East Brunswick Public Schools are doing in regards to the filling landfill. At some point, I would like a meeting to discuss this. We still have a minute.
What's that?
Can I respond?
You can absolutely respond.
So, Mrs. Daman.
So, is she, is she yielding the rest of her time?
Yeah, we're not going to get in a back-and-forth dialogue.
So, you can yield...
We're not, we have one minute.
No, this is not a back-and-forth.
Okay, that's fine. I'm requesting a meeting.
If you're done with your conversa, with your remarks, then the president can respond.
Okay.
Well, I mean, she's made an accusation that we don't recycle, and that's not true. And in fact, your Facebook post, which I have a copy of and I've distributed to the board, it has a couple of issues in it. One, that's, that's a trash can. That was staging for after-school programs, and you allude that that's not a recycling can. The recycling can exists inside the school. This was being staged for students inside the building. So, by your own post, you're posting an inaccurate representation. That, that water hasn't been distributed yet. It's on a cart to be distributed inside the school, and I want to point out that that water was not purchased with taxpayer money. That water was purchased in our after-school program with parent, private parent funds of parents...
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
You can continue, Dr. Valeski.
Private parent funds that...
My turn. Thank you.
I'll continue for the record.
Yeah.
That we are recycling inside the schools. This was a representation, and furthermore, we had this, Ms. Nguyen was on school property in violation of our protocols during the actual instructional day because our after-school program goes until 6:00 PM, and she was on the property in spite of being instructed by our school security officers to not be there. And so, she posted a photograph that includes a picture of a student, which we have blurred in this representation, but on the Facebook post, the student's face is visible. And so, that, that is a security breach of our school district's policy, or a breach of our, of our policies in the school district. So, I just want to go on record as that. We do recycle. We have established recycling bins at all of our schools. We have worked with the township. We work with all of our custodians. Some of our recycling bins may even have plastic liners in them, but the custodians take the, the actual recycling bin and dump it into the dumpster because it is a single-stream recycling process, so nothing can be bagged or contained. So, they drop it in loose, and the township has assured us that they are picking up the recycled materials that we distribute into the dumpsters. And in fact, we've even negotiated with the township for an additional dumpster at one of our schools for additional recycling capacity. So, I, I stand before this board and before the public to tell you, we are recycling, and we are making a conscious effort to establish single-fill, water-filling stations at all of our school facilities with a, with the help of PTA funds and support. And so, we are making great strides, I believe, in reducing our carbon footprint and reducing the amount of plastic in our schools. But I will tell you, as leader of the school district, I am not ready to recommend that we eliminate or ban plastic water bottles because in a situation like we currently have, we have a flu epidemic, second round coming. It, it can be fatal if, if not treated properly, and we're going to protect the safety of students by making sure that fluids they consume on our property that we distribute to them are the safest possible vessel we can possibly provide. Right now, that's a plastic water bottle, a single-use plastic water bottle.
I, I just want to respond to a comment that was made as well. Last year, there was a quest to go in and monitor the lunch program, et cetera.
Sure.
What was being read from were guidelines, federal guidelines, not the law. You have a duty under the law to ensure that the schools are secure during the school day for the safety of our staff and students. We do not allow parents to just come and go as they please. They, if they come in, they sign, and they're invited to be there for a purpose during school day while children are present, and that's done for safety, protocol reasons. Second, if you heard the statement that was read, it says you bring it to the attention of administration. That's been done, and the administration is Dr. Valeski and all the staff and principals of all different schools, and they're the ones that do the implementation to ensure that we're doing recycling, that we're providing safe lunches, healthy lunches, et cetera. But that's why they're the professionals running the district, and we do not allow parents to come in and observe and monitor because frankly, that's not best practices. It's not in compliance with all the lockdown drills and all the mandates of the state to ensure that our schools are the safest possible environment for the students and staff. So, I wanted to go on record with that as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, I close the public portion, and we move on to our agenda this evening. Can I please have a motion for items one to three on the Board of Education agenda? Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Sure.
Second by Mr. Hung. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwaz.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons. Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carry. Can I please have a motion for items one and two on this evening's community programs?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks, second by Mrs. Reese. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion for items one and two on tonight's curriculum agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reese. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. On our facility agenda, we have one item, change order. Can I please have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Simmons, second by Mrs. Lacks. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion for items one through 10 on tonight's financial services?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks. Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hung. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. I'm going to hold the next item on our agenda, personnel action, until after our closed session this evening, where a vote will be taken. And we move on to one item on our staff development agenda. Can I please have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks, second by Mrs. Reese. Is there any discussion? Mark?
Yes, just a question because it's a repeat of a workshop. I want to know what's different with this, and it doesn't specify how many workshops it's going to be or how many days.
So Mrs. Bradison is specialized in working with staff around dyslexia and delivering targeted instruction, and she's been scheduled to come to Hammershold March 12th, 27th, and May 11th.
How does that differ from the previous workshop? Like who was in attendance, what's...
Earlier in the fall, she did a workshop for the whole staff on the PD Day in November, and she came back to do some follow-up work with some of the teachers at Hammershold and the reading specialists and instructional coaches. So this is an extension of her work with that group.
Okay, forgive me, I couldn't really hear. This is, will be for Hammershold staff?
Correct.
So it's not a district-wide?
She did a district-wide on our PD Day in November.
On PD Day, and this, this, this motion is for Hammershold, okay. Okay, any more questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion for items one through six on tonight's student services?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reese. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, real quick.
Sure, absolutely.
I just think it's, when the breakdowns, especially the UN trips and stuff, there's a lot of the student and parent contribution to this, and I think that's excellent. You know, they're, I guess, putting their money where their mouth is. They're going on these trips, but a lot of it is funded by the kids involved and the parents involved. So I think that's very admirable and should be pointed out.
Thank you, Mark, that is a very good point to make. And even more so with the, with the UN, at least it's the way it used to be, for the tryouts, the kids had to prepare a paper. So there was a tremendous amount of work that goes into it, and you don't even know if you're going to be on the team. Of course, if that's changed at this point, but probably not that much. So I absolutely agree with you, and it was a point well made. Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote, secretary please call the roll.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Our student rep is not with us this evening, so we have several committee reports on the agenda. Who would like to go first?
So I guess finance, we met on February fourth, and you saw the reports tonight, so that makes for a very short committee report, the easiest committee report. So while I'm there, I'll also mention, we had a policy meeting, policy committee tonight, and how many policies did we review?
Ten.
Ten, ten policies. And we are going paperless, so it's emailed to us, we review it, and we talk about it at the meeting, so we're saving the delivery of these documents to us, so working towards that, paperless.
I'm just curious, if, off the top of your head, and I don't know who could answer this or even have this answer tonight, what percentage of the policies that come out of the policy committee to recommend to the board are state-driven mandates? And what percentage are organic, so to speak, from the district, recommended at the district level to come up with a policy? Do we have any idea?
I'm going to take a guess.
Go ahead, I'll let you, I've got a number in mind.
Ninety-eight percent.
I was going to say ninety-seven, ninety-five percent, somewhere in that range.
At least, there's very few, you modify the policies to fit your district, but most of the policies come down, and not all of them are required. There are mandatory policies, so for example, you must have an HIV policy. There are other policies that are recommended. You must have, you know, there's a new law that came out about the Domestic Violence Act. You must have a policy on domestic violence. And that's why you have the different policy entities out there, Strauss estimate and school boards, where they monitor the legislation, and then when they send it out, they'll usually have an M on it for mandatory, and if it doesn't, then it's discretionary. But it gives you the ability to modify it, but most of it is to comply with either state and/or federal law or regulations or directives from the DOE. And that can change from time to time over the years. And that's why you have to occasionally modify policies as things change in terms of curriculum, testing, all that.
And one of the things we talked about this evening is the process by which the administration is going through all the policies and just making sure that they're up to date. And the ones that we reviewed tonight, majority of them are because of just legal updates that are required.
Mandatory changes.
So it's to keep us in compliance.
Yes.
And Matt, there are sanctions for boards of Ed that do not comply with mandate, legal, mandated state policies, correct?
Absolutely. If you don't comply with them, you can have, you know, there can be monitoring, oversight, takeovers, loss of state aid, there's all kinds of consequences.
Loss of state aid, yeah, okay.
So you have to comply with it by law. And it's really to let the public and the staff also know what the policies are so that they, you know, are educated in terms of the decisions that we make, or the board makes, and then administration carries out.
They're the laws that run our district.
Yeah, this board establishes the laws based on the law established by Trenton, and it's the rules of engagement for all the employees, staff, and students of this district that you guys all set as the board.
Thank you. We often talk about policy and...
Could I give a, can I just give a shout-out for the, for our policies and regulations on our website? We do have, for the public, if you look on our website, under the Board of Education, you can drop down to policies and regulations. You can review those policies and regulations by category, or you can search them by keywords. So that's available for the public, too.
That's good, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we do have a need for a closed session tonight.
You have another policy, another committee?
Oh, we had another committee.
Yeah, what happened?
I'm so sorry, oh.
Well, transportation.
Slipped my mind.
Transportation did lead, even though President Becker forgot about us. And what we learned...
I was there.
You were there, and actually, it was a great meeting. We're starting to look at more of the efficiencies on transportation, particularly surrounding after-school programs, sporting events, trying to align the sporting events a little bit better so we don't have to have so many things like coach buses. So we're just getting a little more granular in that area, that's a pretty substantial budget expense. We're exploring the efficacy of adding our own bus as opposed to contracting, and looking at everything possible to save some money in that area over time. So, first meeting, I think it went well, and we have some more to do.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any information items? Go to the cause for the board. Seeing none, we do have a need for a closed session? Okay. Where's the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting? Those matters as follows, those items in tonight's agenda. Whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be sixty minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Can I please have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks, second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries.